Paul, okay. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, on to consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a topic?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, on on to the informational items. Dr. Montes.
All right, just to give everybody kind of an update of where we're at, obviously quite a bit has changed since our last meeting there in late March. We were on that staged closure process for some time and then not too long ago, the governor extended that through the end of the school year for all school districts in the state of Missouri. So now, at least now, we have a definite timeline to know that we're carrying this through the end of the year. That's allowed us to do a variety of things. First of all, we have finalized our grading practices for what we're going to do for third and fourth quarter. So we've communicated that out to families and students and basically fourth quarter is hold harmless. Students have the significant opportunity to improve their grades for those middle school and high school students. But their third quarter grade will stand for them if they're unable to do that. So I think that gives them at least some level of motivation, hopefully, to continue their work at home. For those who want to improve their grades and hopefully, everybody will take advantage of that. Really, at this point, it's about the learning as much as anything. And I know our teachers are doing their best to try to keep every student engaged at this point. We're reaching out to those students and families, trying to make sure that engagement is as high as it can be. And obviously, nobody's experienced this the way we're experiencing it right now. So we're making the best of the situation. Also trying to recognize our students for their and staff for what they're doing. So I know we've shared a lot, both the district level and the building level in terms of communication, social media and the like. For example, I had a chance to participate in the online NHS induction last Thursday, which was nice to be able to recognize those students. And I know we're thinking about other things that we can do between now and the end of the school year. Of course, the big item on the agenda in our planning right now is trying to identify what graduation will look like. We are to the point now, I think, given the fact that we know we're close to the end of the school year, that we can look for a summer date for graduation. So our tentative plan right now is to schedule a date in mid-July, Friday, July 17th, for a graduation with a backup date of the next night if we need to and and shift that to doing it at Panther Stadium so that we have a little more control over the facility and the timing and the coordinating of the logistics that go around with that. Now, all of that, of course, is very contingent upon having the health orders in place and the criteria to where we can actually have it at that point in time. We thought we'd at least put a date out there, even though it still is probably going to be somewhat tentative for a while until we get a sense of what the recommendations and guidelines are going to be moving forward. But that gives us enough, hopefully enough time to be able to bring people back together. And if it turns out that's not doable, as we get closer to that time, we can always communicate a later date. So I think a lot of districts right now are looking at somewhere in July or even early August for some to do that. So we're looking at that mid-July, July 17th is our first tentative date in hopes that we can get it done at that point. We'll have a lot more details and communication coming out regarding that, but I think Mr. Miller is going to be ready to communicate that out to families in the morning and we'll probably put it out in the news update tomorrow as again, a tentative scheduling of that.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
Stadium?
Yeah, we would do that at the stadium with the idea that that gives us the most flexibility to schedule, reschedule as needed. And I also think Cass County might have fewer restrictions by mid-July than St. Jackson County, which was where we normally have it. So I think it gives us the most flexibility in terms of trying to get something scheduled. And at this point, we're not sure, again, what provisions will be in place at that point in time, but at least we want to give folks a date to shoot for in hopes that we can accomplish it at that point in time. We have received some questions about access to buildings and grounds, particular playgrounds in the stadium. I know the board received a comment from a patron regarding that. And our experience there was that even before the stay-at-home order was in place and we were just on a social distancing order, that we were not seeing social distancing being practiced in and around the stadium and/or playgrounds. City Raymore, I know, was seeing the same thing. So even before stay-at-home was into effect, we had concerns there that it was not the people who are taking advantage of it were not following those orders. So just out of an abundance of caution, we've closed those facilities. And I think from the short term, that's probably where we'll continue until those guidelines get eased in some form or fashion in the future. Then really, other than graduation, the other big thing we want to be focused on at this point and in our planning is what summer school is going to look like. Dr. Volker and his team have been working on putting together a plan that is flexible and adjustable as we need to because regardless of what we set in play right now, the dynamics could change over the next six weeks as we move closer to summer school. But the intent and thought right now is that we would plan a June session that would be an online session. Make that available. Bless you. Make an online session available in June and then with the hopes of having a July session where we could actually have students in person. There's no guarantee that that's going to be possible, but we're optimistic, at least at this point, that we could have some type of in-person summer school in in July. And normally, at this April board meeting, we're asking you to approve our summer school application for the state. They've extended that deadline to the end of May because they know districts are wanting flexibility. I served on a summer school task force with DESI and representatives from across the state to talk about what summer school could look like. And so DESI today issued some guidelines on things for us to consider and think about and how to how to be looking towards having, hopefully, a quality opportunity for the kids this summer. So again, at this point, we're going to have to be flexible. We're thinking online in June. And then hopefully, with the potential for being in person and/or online in July. And July could be a combination of both. So some type of blended programming. So that's what we're working on at this point. I've opened it up for any questions as it relates to any of these topics that I've covered or any others that you want to talk about regarding our closure as it is right now.
I just want you to know that we had the Bridle Ridge kindergarten graduation in my driveway tonight and my daughter Elsie was the valedictorian of the class.
Okay.
Your granddaughter?
My granddaughter.
Did she get a cap and gown and everything, Kate?
She did. I had my little gown. Well, Amy had a little gown to go over and then we had a cap and so we did the whole thing and she gave a little speech and thanked her mom and dad.
That was excellent. But I know families and our staff members alike are trying to find ways to keep kids motivated and reward them for their efforts. And by the way, just because she's graduated from your family standpoint, doesn't mean she can stop working the next four weeks. Just want to clarify that.
That's right.
Four more weeks to go on that. Any other questions I can answer or our team can answer?
All right, we will move along then to action items. And first up is the 2020-21 salary schedules. Dr. Montes wanted to start, please.
Yeah, so just a little context there. When we met back in March for our work session to talk about budget, obviously, we didn't know what we were going to be experiencing a month later. You know, it was early in the process at that point and I don't think we were really envisioning some type of closure or shutdown at that early stage. And so obviously, we need to revisit all of our assumptions. So part of that was kind of a revised effort with what we normally do with Team Ray Peck. We had talked about in March doing some salary enhancements beyond just step movement on the schedules. But the reality is, we expect enough of a drop in revenues in the coming year that we needed to revisit that. We do think it's a priority to honor steps and so we approached Team Ray Peck with that scenario. And Dr. Peck and Gill, again, has done a nice job this year, kind of leading that process. But I can tell you the feedback we got was they would be extremely excited as a staff if we can ensure those steps for experience moving forward. We worked really hard to try to be competitive over the last couple of years and we don't want to lose any of that progress. So with that, I'd turn it over to Lisa to describe kind of what's there with the schedules.
Hi, everyone. On the schedules, I did prepare in the board item just an summary of the changes per schedule. Just to make it a little bit easier for you. In a nutshell, the big thing that we did was we added a step or a parameter to each of the schedules to ensure that all staff, regardless of where they were, would receive a step or the equivalence of a step that going into this next school year. So that no one would be considered frozen. Although nothing has been added to the base salary, everyone would see a slight increase with their step. That's really the biggest change in our schedules. The other changes you may have noticed are grades that were adjusted or extra duty positions that were added based upon your action in March. So all the things that you voted to approve there, such as the movement of our lead custodians or our kitchen managers or our paras, they're reflected in the grade classifications. Otherwise, there really aren't any major changes, but I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but Ruth and I had talked earlier about paying the bus company. Are we still paying our bus company and?
That's actually an agenda item later on down in the agenda, so we will get to that.
Okay.
So are there any other questions for Dr. Hatfield on the 2020-21 salary schedules? Okay, is there a motion?
A motion that we approve the salary schedules as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion or comment? Okay, roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hatfield. Okay, on to East Middle School Pond dredging bid. Dr. Petten Gill, thank you.
Good evening. As you may remember from discussions during a previous work session, the fire pond at East Middle School is silted in. And that reduced our ability to meet water flow requirements for the school fire suppression system, our sprinkler system. We believe this was caused by runoff from the row cropping ground previously in place when the land was developed. So the district solicited proposals to remove the silt. Multiple companies actually showed interest in the project and called about the scope, most from Oklahoma and Texas. In the end, Estate Management Services of Missouri was the only vendors to submit a bid for the needed work. We were happy to see that that bid was below our estimates. State Management Services has previously done all the work at Silver Lake and Raymore and they gave them a very positive reference. It is being recommended that the board approve the bid from Estate Management to remove the silt at East Middle School for the at the fire pond there for the proposed amount of $48,567 with a 10% contingency for any unforeseen issues.
Is this a temporary fix or will this fix that issue?
Well, we feel that the main issue was from when it was row cropped out there and so and again, it's not a guarantee, but we feel this will be a long-term fix. It won't just be a Band-Aid. We think when it was row cropped, you know, that's a lot of loose soil and all of that area drains into where the pond is. So this allows us, now that it's sod-farmed and we have a lot less runoff, we feel this will be a decent fix. We did look at some other options. We looked at tying into a a different water main that was price prohibitive.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the bid from Estate Management Services LLC to remove the silt from the East Middle School Fire Pond for the proposed amount of $48,567 plus a 10% contingency for any unforeseen issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yeah.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. On to district-wide parking lot repairs. Dr. Petten Gill.
Very good. Thank you. So in early planning with the board for summer 2020 capital projects, we had earmarked an approximate amount of $120,000 for district-wide upkeep and repairs. And we're not going to do a major replacement this year, which is a good thing and that allows us to utilize our budget to take care of our previous investments. Sealing the cracks and then seal coating the entire lot extends the life of the parking lot substantially by keeping the moisture out. Scott Dobson, excellent asset for the district. He identified areas of need at five elementary schools in terms of priority. Specifically at some playground asphalt cracks at Creekmore Eagle Glen are being focused on. We had three companies provide all of the requested unit quotes, the unit cost quotes, which we use to determine the low price for the identified needs. Phillips Paving provided the lowest overall price to meet the needs of our district. It is being recommended that the bid from Phillips Paving be approved to complete the work district-wide in the amount of $128,478.12 with a 5% contingency.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move that we recommend bid for Phillips Paving to be approved and complete the work district-wide in the amount of $128,478.12 with a 5% contingency.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was there any other questions, comments, discussion?
Were most the repairs to playgrounds or were they actually to parking lots?
It's a good question. We're doing actually pretty substantial repairs at peculiar Eagle Glen, Raymore, Creekmore and Timber Creek. But I know that we'd had some questions in the past about the cracks at Creekmore and Eagle Glen in the asphalt playing area. So I just wanted to point out that we are repairing those. We've done Band-Aids on those in the past. Just by filling in the cracks and trying to crack seal those and it just doesn't hold because the cracks are too big. So we're going to do more substantial repairs to those. But it's pretty widespread, a lot of a lot of crack sealing, which just means filling in the cracks and then seal coating the parking lot, which then requires restriping once you've done that.
Now, the high school is probably our biggest area just all around there. How is it holding up?
It's doing pretty well. We have that kind of as an alternate in our planning. Scott had laid that out. We have the price quotes on that. You may hear me revisit the topic in the spring, once the dust settles and we see where our revenues are. We wanted to keep very conservative on our plans. And we did invest heavily in the high school campus between South Middle School and the high school and in that area in the pound parking lot in front of the stadium recently. So it's in pretty good shape and I don't think we're being detrimental by not attacking it this summer. But there are some, that would be our next area. It's specifically just like in certain areas.
All right, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, on to early childhood tuition. Dr. Volker.
Well, good evening, everybody. We got some exciting changes to talk about in our tuition plan and in our programming overall. So first, I'd like to point out and kind of share, a new addition is a full-day, five-day option. You'll see listed on our plan with a certified teacher. So that's 7.2 hours a day. Where students will have a certified staff member that's working with them at the pre-kindergarten level. So that's very exciting. We're truly excited about that. And if you'll notice the price of that for the reduced eligible and the free lunch eligible students, that program is provided full day for no cost and that's reimbursable through our ADA. So that's an exciting, that's certainly the group that we're trying to target overall in our program. Our students who might not have opportunities beyond. Now that they can have a full day opportunity with a certified teacher, we're truly excited about that. So that's, we're definitely going to be talking about that with our parents and moving forward. One change you'll also see in the document, there is no longer a half-day option because it's declined every year in enrollment. We just don't see any demand with our half-day option in our program. So our goal also on our tuition plan and overall was to simplify and align, simplify and align with our different categories, make sure we were being equitable across them and align with our outside childcare facilities. I think we have to be very careful. We are in a community that has excellent childcare in and around our community. We are trying to serve the majority of our students who don't have those opportunities. So we looked at alignment with those. So if you'll take, for example, our five-day pre-kindergarten program, the three and a half hour class and the 6.7 hours of Sharpton, in total, that would be $175 a week on our plan. That aligns with our local childcare. We don't want to outcompete in that area and we are looking to target and identify students that might not be able to even access those. So we see the school district a benefit that we can provide. You'll see the four-day peer model as very little change on that. That is our integrated model where we have our opportunity for pre-kindergarten children to model classroom behaviors and skills for children who have developmental delays. You see that that is still an opportunity and they can in that four-day program. You'll see that go 8 to 11:15 or 12 to 3:15, that three and a half hours. And if they are in that, that is at no cost. Even the full pay rate, if they're a part of that integrated blended plan, there is no cost for that as well. So that is our proposal. Excited about the full-day opportunity, very much so. We think that will absolutely be a great service for our pre-kindergarten students in our community who meet that reduced lunch and free lunch eligible criteria.
One thing I would just add to that recommendation is the fact that we do have a limit on how many students we can turn in for formula reimbursement from the state and it comes down to 4% of our free and reduced lunch count district-wide. So for us, that's about that's about 60 students in total would be the most we would have eligible under that free and reduced lunch eligibility. So right now, even if those classes were to fill up with free and reduced lunch eligible students, we should be able to include all those. There'll be a limit to how how far we can expand that and still claim state aid on those students. But that's our priority right now because those students typically are really have the needs there to be supported by us in our program.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2020-21 tuition for early childhood services as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, on, thank you, everyone. On to board policies. Dr. Montes.
We have a group of six policies for second reading and approval this evening. Those went through the policy review process and you saw those last month as well. One is a change the district is making related to allowing for an extra year of credit on the service time for teachers coming into the district and we've been upping that a year every year for several years now. And so we want to keep that trend moving forward. And the other five were recommended by a policy service. So you've seen these before, but I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
All right, is there a motion?
A move that we approve the following board policies as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yes.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, now to transportation contractor requests. Dr. Montes.
Okay, I'm going to try to summarize the discussions that have been happening over the last month and Dr. Petten Gill and I have had multiple conversations with the leadership from our, from Apple Bus Company regarding our transportation services. Obviously, this closure related to the pandemic has affected them in a dramatic way and we started talking about different scenarios on how we could maybe help facilitate them making it through this process, given the fact that per their contract, they're only required to be paid for the days that they provide services to the district. So we are like many districts who contract their transportation services. And the question is, what is fair to them? Because they build their price structure for us on the ability to operate 172 days. And this year in particular, we're going to end up with 44 less days by the time we get to May 22nd than we would normally. And so their overhead doesn't stop in terms of paying for their buses and their facilities. Some of their operational costs obviously do go down. And in the case of drivers and monitors, for example, the week of spring break, they had the ability to go on unemployment and many of them have just applied and been, and stayed on unemployment during this closure. When Apple Bus first approached us, they had talked about you know, requesting 100% of their, just their daily basic service of home to school and back home, not counting any of the typical extra shuttles and activity routes and things of that sort that they will bill us for throughout the year. The idea at that point in time was trying to keep the drivers employed for fear of losing them to other employment opportunities. Not long after that, though, the CARES Act was passed by the federal government, which expanded unemployment benefits significantly to the point where if they qualify for both the state and the federal unemployment piece, our drivers and monitors can essentially be made whole with those additional benefits. Most of them have successfully applied for the state unemployment. The federal unemployment piece has got a longer time lag to it and they're just gradually coming on to that. But as I understand it, that will be backdated. If, once they do get approved, that'll be backdated to when the act effect, if you will. So we've kind of shifted our thought about what is, what is right and fair. And I'll just be open with you in that some districts are paying 100% of their daily to and from school, which for us is about $20,000 for the basic service daily. And other districts are at zero. They're not agreeing to pay any and there are any number of districts doing something in between. This is one of those classic situations where there is no right or wrong answer per se. But we do think it's important to have some level of partnership with our bus contractor because we're going to need them as soon as we can start back up. And we need them to be solvent and ready to operate at that point in time. I did put some scenarios down and we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I wanted to at least bring it up for discussion. I do think it would be a reasonable thing to do to try to provide some level of financial support for them in anticipation of reopening. But you know, we, the basic math is it's $20,000 a day for the basic service. You could do 0 to 100% of that and it would be a multiplication equation from there just to figure out what might be reasonable. I did speak with our attorney about if we agreed to something for them, what would, what could we do or what would we put in writing? And the attorney's opinion was we could, we could reduce any details we would want to an agreement in hopes that they would be agreeable to that. So that's just kind of a high-level discussion. The caveat, one caveat to that is the fact that under our state transportation reimbursement formula, we get about 20% of our costs paid for from the state. And that calculation is done for the next year. So if we were to pay them something between now and the end of the year or for this part of the closure, in theory, we'd get some reimbursement back from that next year, about 20%. But that's unknown because the state budget process is not done. So we're not sure what that reimbursement rate would be for next year. Probably be less than 20%, quite frankly. So there would be some option there. And at this point, we do, we are aware that we're going to receive some of the title, some of the CARES Act federal dollars will come to the district under their title distribution formula. So at this point, we're estimating about $380,000 of support. And there is language in the, in the bill, the federal bill about trying to maintain our employees and our contractors to the extent practicable. So there's some support for offering some level of support. And obviously, they're by far our largest contract that we have as a district for service providers. So with that, we can think of any number of scenarios. I tried to present a few. And the third bullet would be the one I would probably have you look at first, and that is to look at some of those direct overhead costs for the buses that they're having to continue to pay leases on. Uh, some of those direct overhead costs for their the buses that they're having to continue to pay leases on. Uh, their facility that they're going to have to continue to pay for operation of that facility. Uh, and then some full time staff that we need there for uh working with drivers and maintaining the buses and things of that sort. So we can be ready to go whenever time permits it in terms of providing the services. So. I think I told Ruth that in my seven years as superintendent, this might only be the second time I brought you something like this without a firm recommendation because there really is no right or wrong answer. Um, I think they would be appreciative of any level of support we would provide. Um, and by the same token, um, you know, our hope is that they're going to be ready for our our needs once we can have kids in in person again. So with that, I'd kind of open it up and try to answer any questions uh you might have.
Are we currently not paying them anything right now?
That that is correct. They've at per our contract right now, all all we're required to pay is uh the the daily contracted amount for days that they provide those services. So. There's no invoicing happening right now. It's just a request on their port their part for consideration.
If we if we would pay the fifty five percent, would it put us in in jeopardy in any way?
So that's a that's a hard question to answer right now because we're not sure in the end what our budget is going to look like for next year. Overall, for this year's budget, the one we're in right now, we are seeing a reduction in revenues, but we're also seeing a reduction in some of our expenditures. And and Cindy Bias has done some work on trying to calculate what that looks like. And for the most part, we think. The the decreases in both revenues and expenditures will be largely offsetting. So for this year, our overall budget balances should be reasonably close to what we anticipated. Next year is a whole another level of uncertainty because we just don't know what the state budget is going to look like. And how long this closure might impact sales taxes and some of the other things that fund our budgets. So. We're less immune or more immune to um say, sales tax issues than city and county governments, but. Uh, the state formula is a big piece of this puzzle and we're we just don't know yet what that's going to be funded like for next year. Um, but overall, we've got, you know, hea- healthy balances right now. We're prepared for a situation like this. Um, if the board wanted to do something, um, you know, I I think I think we can manage that from a budgetary perspective with the hope of maintaining that strong partnership. Um, one of the other conversations we've had is the fact that, you know, when we bid this two years ago, I guess three years ago now, we're starting. Uh, finishing up our second year, getting ready to start our third, they were by far the lowest lowest bid contractor by approximately eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So um, they, you know, transportation services are a really challenging industry the last several years. Especially from a hiring recruiting drivers perspective, but um for the most part, they've managed through that that scenario. Um, but right now we're in some unknown territory. So it's really hard to know. How how's a company, they're going to be able to respond. But I think they're. They're optimistic that they can they can have a successful restart and carry on. But I know all transportation providers are struggling right now in terms of what what it's going to look like for them. Because of the uncertainty of not knowing when they're going to get their next uh uh next payment for services. So.
If we offer them the fifty five percent and they don't accept it, um, would we be held accountable? Um, and then my second question, I guess. Are we going to revise our contracts in the future to um negate anything that we're kind of running into like this that, I mean, it was unforeseen, but. I mean, I'm sure your contracts are going to reflect something like this.
So there's no doubt that anything we would agree to, we'd probably need to do an addendum to our current contract to make it formalized. But I do think at the point in time after this next year, which is the third year of a three year agreement. We have the option for an extension and I'm guessing that they will be requesting some language in that extension that would address this. Uh, just to give you a frame of references, my what I believe that one of the other large contractors that operates in the country. Has language in their uh contract that says they get a certain percentage for those overhead costs, the buses and so forth. On days that are lost in their in their cat their their schedule or their calendar. Um, our contract does is silent on that. So my guess is they're going to want to ask for something like that in the future. Um, just from a business perspective, and it wouldn't surprise me. But that's, we're probably talking more closer in that thirty five to forty five percent range. Uh, for something like that. I think uh the one provider I was aware of that does one of the large Missouri districts has a thirty eight percent number. That they have hardwired into their contract for situations such as these where they can't offer those services on for any reason. Usually that's a a smaller number of days that are forgiven for weather emergencies more so than what we're dealing with now. But. The the math is the same. Their bus leases, you know, paraded for their operations over the hundred and seventy two days and the fact that we do forty four days less. Doesn't change that amount in total. So.
Dr. Montes, what are the, um, do you know the percentages um in terms of their fixed costs and in terms of the buses? And their um, some of their fixed overhead?
So if you look at basically some of their buses and the facility that they operate. Related to that with the utilities and insurance they have to keep on that, based on the information we've received from them. Um, that's uh, that's probably in the neighborhood of thirty five percent. And then above and beyond that would be any staff members that you thought were. Um, ones that needed to be there regardless of operations or not, such as the mechanics and the manager and the and and the dispatcher router person. We're going to need them um if we're going to have a a summer school or start to our new school year. So there's an extra ten percent there of those kind of staff members that could be considered more uh day to day essential. Um. Uh, just to from from a management standpoint. So but just the billing and the buses themselves and those general overhead, that's around thirty five percent based on the figures they provided to us. And they seem what they provided to us seems reasonable. I don't question uh really what they've given us in terms of the background of our our current situation.
Would we go uh like back a month since, you know, basically we haven't been paying them for the last month and and pick that up also?
I think that would be reasonable um to do that because again, every day we don't operate, the buses are still there, the facility costs are still there for the most part. So. Um, the only question on that is if any of the staff members that are. Um, there might be one or two that are drawing unemployment now that we might want them to bring back, but that's a relatively small piece of the puzzle. So. I think it would be reasonable to go back um for all forty four days of the closure. Uh, at at whatever price you would. If you were trying to bring all the drivers back, um, that would be different math because some of them, since they're drawing unemployment now, we would have to start that at a. A new point in time. They couldn't do both. We couldn't back pay them and then uh for the time they're drawing unemployment. So. That scenario. In fact, I, you know, I'm having another conversation with the president of the company today. And some of the districts where they went ahead and brought the drivers back, um. Uh, the fact that some of them were losing out on the federal unemployment piece was not necessarily seen as a positive. Uh, again, because they were, um, if once they get qualified and get approved for that. Um, in many cases, they might actually be making more than they would if they were if driving if there's their basic uh five hour guarantee.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, you may have already answered this. I could step away for a second, but um. Have you talked to all the districts that Apple Bus contracts with?
So they have a large number of districts, both in Missouri and outside of Missouri across the country. Um, you know, one of the first questions I had is what were they eligible for any of the federal? Monies in the recovery act. But as a company overall, there are more than five hundred employees by quite a bit. In fact, I think they're over a thousand. So most of those provisions were targeted to five hundred or less. So they don't get to qualify for that. Um, I do know that um, as I understand it, at least one district or more than one district might be uh doing that hundred percent that they initially requested. And they may even agree to that before the CARES Act was even passed potentially. But I also know of other districts that haven't agreed to pay anything yet. So there, again, there's no right or wrong answer with this. It's just about. Trying to maintain that partnership in a way that allows us to hopefully have a s- a successful restart when the time comes. Um, you know, I I think if you wanted to entertain somewhere in that um, you know, twenty five to forty five percent range, I think they would. Uh, they would view that positively, knowing that that's helping them cover those fixed costs that they really can't do much about. And still come back and operate when we need them. So. I I think somewhere in that range makes a lot of sense. And again, I'm I'm hopeful that um most of those drivers and monitors will qualify for that expanded enhanced unemployment that will. Make them somewhere close to whole in this process, if not a little better.
I.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Um, I I would like to see the fifty five percent and also kind of put in in wording that. You know, we will continue to review the impact of the federal stimulus bills. And if that would change. Then we would have the option of of cutting that back a little bit. I- if if it doesn't put us behind the eight ball to to do fifty five percent.
I think I would rather have a stick to the forty five because that covers just the essential stuff that they're having to do right now. He said thirty five percent was buses and facility and operating cost, and then ten percent would cover the essential staff. That is required to be there or needed to be there. So that would be forty five percent.
Is that the number three option, Ruth?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that's the third bullet. And I just want to qualify. When we say essential, they're all essential.
Absolutely.
We have folks that we need to have there just to be able to even bring back the 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 rest of the team from the unemployment when the time comes. So. Um, they're still maintaining the buses. That's still happening. They're still working on them. Uh, so they're they're trying to do what we're doing, which is try to get ahead on some things now that we're in this phase right now. I think uh, Paul, to your point, uh, we could actually go the other way as well, agree to something lower and then come back and revisit it again in May if we wanted to. And I think they would be open to that idea. I shared with the president that uh, uh, I didn't know for sure if we would even have a a a. A firm direction after tonight, but I told him that even if we did, it might be the May meeting before we actually have a a a contract document. An addendum that you're going to approve. So he was a he was understanding of that and agreeable. He's a former board member himself, so he knows how how. You operate as a board. And so uh, I think you could give me some level of direction through a a general motion of. Take it this direction so that they can plan accordingly and then we work on an actual document for you to approve um at at the next meeting.
I I think, you know, if it's not going to hurt us in any way, um, and, you know, we're going to get reimbursed part of that eventually. You know, that just showing good faith that, you know, someday we can come back and say, hey, you know, we. We we covered you in time of need, you know, we we went ahead and 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 did what we thought was right. You know, to to take care of your staff and your drivers and monitors.
Yeah, and I think there's that aspect of it, which I I absolutely agree with. And also, I I think it's prudent. For us to do some percentage like we're talking about because. We need to be in a position to have a functioning bus company, you know, come August or, you know, whenever a restart is. And. There aren't that many bus companies to choose from. So we need to make sure that we protect ourselves. By making sure that our bus company is viable come come the fall.
Phil, Billy, Aaron, any thoughts?
Well, my my thought is, I know there's no right or wrong answer, but you know, there's. We got to do the right thing. And I think being able to, if it if that fifty five percent doesn't put us in a in a bind. I think that is going a long way to being uh, you know, showing good faith. And, you know, being good, good business partners uh in this. And. You know, I. I did, I just think that's the right thing to do.
Let let me kind of clarify something before we go further with this conversation. That and that scenario, the fifty five percent was. The idea of just bringing back all staff and letting them worry about the overhead piece. That's where that number was gen- generated from. My conversation today with the president said was that there are in some districts where they paid the full hundred percent and brought every employee back. Right, the regular pay. That that has not necessarily been well received because they're aware of the extra unemployment benefits that are available right now. So that's a different uh, that that fifty five percent was put together for a different reason or for a different analysis, if you will. I'm okay with the fifty five percent, but I don't know that I would want to condition it to be just salary only.
Well, Dr. What is the percent that involves um the buses and the overhead? So everything excluding the salaries?
That would be thirty five percent essentially. That's kind of the the basic just facility and. Uh, bus costs based on the numbers we we've received without any of the staffing piece. The forty five percent covers the half dozen or so. Full time employees that are there year round um to get that extra ten percent to get to forty five percent.
So maybe forty five percent are are number.
Well, yeah, I agree with that then. I was misconstruing that fifty five percent with that. So if we're taking care of the basic needs as well as the full time staff, I think that's, you know, I think that's. A positive, extremely positive. Uh, and that keeps keeps our buses maintained, which is important.
And I think at least, you know, when, if we can at least do that to start, like you said, it's it's no. I'd rather start lower and then go more if we're able to and and it's necessary than to than to overshoot our. Our mark and then have to say, oh, we need to step this back a little bit. So um. You know, I I agree with that. It's 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 necessary and it's very much a um in our. I don't know what I'm trying to say in our.
Just a goodwill gesture.
Right, it's in our benefits, you know, it's to our benefit if we do so, I think. But um, at the same time, I don't want to be subsidizing other. Entities um. Their use of the of the bus company as well, I guess.
Billy, did you have any thoughts?
I I kind of feel the same way. I think we should, I mean, the closest number that we can get to fifty percent um that would cover their. Their expenditures, their their expenses, their monthly expenses um or daily expenses that it it's going to take to run their business. Um, I mean, we can't pay anything more than that because, I mean, most of those people that are working that, I mean, they're they're laid off anyway or they're they're drawn unemployment. So. I think it's closest fifty percent. Um, I think that's good faith that that would be. In a step in the right direction, yeah.
So, Dr. Montes, would it be appropriate then for us to make a motion for you to get the contract to do forty five percent?
Yes, that would be fine.
Does it need any further language with it?
I would say since we have a forty five percent uh deal here in the background information, it would be understandable that it would kind of follow those. Uh, parameters and you're still going to approve the actual addendum in the end regardless. So you can you can do it as a motion with the intent of forty five percent with the details to be reduced to a written agreement.
And will this go for the rest of the year, forty five percent for the duration of the school year?
It would cover the forty four days and we would make sure that's clear. Anything we would do in the summertime would be based on the rates that are provided. If we can have an in person in July, we'll bring them back and and use them then. Um, otherwise, the the rate schedule for next year is already approved and it was part of the original contract. So this would cover those forty four days we're talking about.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve Dr. Montes to develop a contract to pay them forty five percent of our contract fee? For the months of April and May? Four days.
I would just say for forty four days and not the April part because it does some art.
Yeah. That's amazing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other question? All right, roll call, please.
Kim York.
Yeah.
Paul Kaufman.
Yes.
Ashley Jones.
Yes.
Billy King.
Yes.
Bill Low.
Yes.
Aaron Hallett.
Yes.
Ruth Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, guys. I know we're all in agreement that we want to be a good partner with our bus company because they're they're good to work with us. So we want to maintain that at what we can. So on to superintendent's report.
All right, well, I kind of gave you most of my update at the at the talk about the beginning with the closure, but I just, it's a good time to thank. Once again, all of our staff members for their tremendous efforts to help make this transition to distance learning really happen. Obviously, it's never going to be perfect for everybody, but uh, everybody's really trying hard and and doing the best they can. And. And that really goes especially for our students and parents because I know it's hard to do this at home. Um, and when everybody's got other things on their mind and their life that they've got to try to attend to. Um, but I appreciate everybody's efforts at this point to to help make this work as best we can. None of us signed up for this, um, but we've got a lot of great people, both here at school and at home, that are are trying to to make the best of it. Um, we're really focused on having a good opportunity in the summer and hopefully by July, at the least, it'll it'll be in person where. Everybody can kind of see each other again because I know uh the kids are getting anxious. the kids are getting anxious that, anybody that's got kids at home, I'm sure, is dealing with that question about when they can be with their friends and what that looks like. So I appreciate everybody's flexibility and their hard work to make this happen. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Board of Education comments?
I think, go ahead.
This for committee reports, too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, so we had a mental health task force meeting earlier today, also via video conferencing, and there is a lot of work going on. I mean, it's amazing the amount of research and assessment and planning that is happening with the mental health task force, and so I'm looking forward to some of the recommendations that'll be coming up, but I just wanted to let everyone know that that group is definitely very busy, working very hard, trying to keep planning for the coming, coming school year.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the teachers. Having kids in the district, they are constantly reaching out to my kiddos and just making them feel missed and loved and wanted, and so I just know that being in education, I miss seeing the students every day, and I know how much our, our teachers miss our kids, so I'm just thankful for everything that they're doing during this time.
Any other comment? Bill, I think you're muted. We don't hear you. Nope, we don't hear you. Oh, never mind. We'll get to him later. All right, well, and again, I think I would just echo the rest of the board members. You know, we truly do appreciate and are very thankful for all of the work that our teachers, staff, support members, that all of those people are doing and have been doing every single day with, during the distance learning and providing for our students in any and every way that they have been able to. So we are very, very appreciative of all the extra hard work that they have done to make this possible. All right, on to calendar of events. Our next regular board meeting is May 28th. 6:00 PM closed, 7:00, 8:00, or 7:00 PM open. There, there's nothing else. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you for, everyone for attending.
Thanks, and be safe, everyone.
Thank you.
And thanks, Ryan Gooding.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gooding.